Good evening, everyone. We'll now call the order of the City Council meeting for Monday, July 23, 2018. Please stand and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
This is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This will be our second to last meeting in the fire station here, so we'd like to thank the Fire Department in advance for being so accommodating to the citizens and to the City Council. Thank you. In case of emergency, please exit the room, move toward the main exit, exit the building, and walk to the empty lot on the south side of the parking lot of the fire station. Roll call, please.
All council members are present.
Thank you. Consideration in action on a proposed resolution in commendation of Daniel Thompson's more than 27 years of service to the city of Janesville. It's file resolution number 2018-1565.
Resolution number 2018-1565. Whereas Daniel Thompson is retiring from the city in Janesville employment after diligently served the people in the city of Janesville and the community for over 27 years, retiring as a driver with the Janesville Fire Department. And whereas during Daniel Thompson's employment with the city of Janesville, he provided exemplary professional service and demonstrated conscientious devotion to the duties of his position, which he performed with skill, ability, sincerity, honesty, and dedication. And whereas Daniel Thompson began his employment with the city of Janesville and as a firefighter paramedic with the city of Janesville Fire Department in October of 1990. And whereas Daniel Thompson was involved with a variety of assignments during his tenure in the Fire Department, including firefighter, paramedic, engine paramedic, and motor pump operator. Whereas Daniel Thompson served the department as a recruit trainer and as a department dive team member for 12 years. And whereas it be desired that such commendable service to the city of Janesville be properly recognized, now therefore be it resolved that this people of the city of Janesville through the City Council do express their grateful appreciation to Daniel Thompson for 27 years of loyal public service.
I move to adopt file resolution number 2018-1565.
Second. And a motion by Councilmember Williams, second by Councilmember Gruber, to resolution in commendation of Daniel Thompson's service. Any discussion?
Just that I've had some opportunities to work with him, and always been professional and a good asset to the city of Janesville, and we're gonna miss him.
With that, please vote.
Aye.
Aye. All in favor, raise your hand, and that passes unanimously. And I believe Daniel Thompson is in attendance this evening.
Yes, thank you.
If you want to step forward, and Councilmember Williams has got a resolution for you, and you can say a few words as you wish.
Sure. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
City Council, city managers, chiefs, fellow brothers, sisters back there. I just want to say I came here 28 years ago not knowing anybody in Janesville. I came from a town far, far away, Cuyahoga, Wisconsin. Yeah, I plied all over, and this is the first town that took a chance on me, and I just want to say I wasn't sure if I was gonna stay here, but it's the best decision I ever made. Everybody was so friendly. Like I said, I came here not knowing anybody, no friends, and I'm leaving here with so many friends and a second family. So what do you say to that besides just an awesome experience? And I appreciate the city of Janesville, they've been very accommodating. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your service once again. Next item, public comments on items on the agenda not requiring a public hearing. Next item, public comments on items on the agenda not requiring a public hearing and on matters which can be affected by council action. You have four minutes to make your comments. The Wisconsin Open Meetings laws limits the City Council's ability to respond to speakers. The clerk will call your name. Please state your name and address when called.
She went to go get it.
First name on the list is Rodney Ballerood.
I rise to talk to the City Council, the city of Janesville, Officer Moore, Chief of Police, and all other folks that are here. This is regarding my son, Ty Ballerood, which I know everybody knows, my son, Ty Ballerood. Janesville proposal that's on a paper the other day that says we want to subsidize housing in Janesville to get builders to build more apartments, et cetera. It seems odd, at the same time they would do that, they seem to be never been sidelined by tearing down my son's house, which he's had for approximately eight to 10 years. Time goes on, we've had some problems, et cetera. And it's very interesting that this is based on code violations, which I don't know if the whole council understands or knows this, but those code violations were forgiven by then-city manager Levitt without double jeopardy. Ty was, at that time, going through trouble, and he was not here to defend himself, but city manager forgave him of those code violations without double jeopardy. Ty is on disability. He is a son that is in the Marine Corps. He has two loving granddaughters that love the heck out of him. He has a daughter in Monroe who works, and a fiance with two kids, and one on the way, making five, full-time. He works at night manufacturing. It's got a different name now. At this time, when there has a housing shortage, why do you want to tear down his house, which is paid for? And P.S., by the way, he lets other people stay there, where for the most part, I know, rent-free. This is why I brought the hat that's on the table that I got from my Air Force brother. It says, "Stop. Quit doing this. It's ridiculous." This city is very upset on the outside, but you don't see, on what this city has done. Of course, the Monterey Bridge or Dam, the latest one, but previous to that, all the different things that the city has kind of slid in there and run it under tax increment finance history. And this is the latest proposal, is to subsidize housing for builders so they can get people to come in here and live here. While we already have housing, his being one of them. So I ask you, as what Ronald Reagan said during the Berlin situation, "City of Janesville, do not tear that house down." Thank you, respectfully, Rod Ballerood.
Mr. Ballerood, Mr. Ballerood, could you give us your address also for the record?
I can't hear you, sir.
Your address for the record?
The address is 4608 Pendleton Court, Milton, Wisconsin.
Thank you very much.
Which is North Janesville.
I know.
Ty Ballerood.
Ty Ballerood, 419 South Wall, Let's Read, Janesville. Hasn't changed. If you look up on Google intimate domain, if you ask, "What's the rules, CDBG, what's the rules of intimate domain?", it says, "It hasn't changed. You can't tear down houses without just compensation." That's if you just punch it in in Google and you write, "What is the rules of intimate domain?" How we do the one-two-three knockout punch, you got a copy that I'm sending out. We basically describe building structure as a single-family house, because up under 140 or 150, you won't find single-family house. You'll find in the public, 50% equalization. You'll find housing code, you'll find to the public. You will not find the word "house." You'll find the word "housing code." That's how, that's the one-two-three. That's all procedure. That's all legal procedure to break just compensation, apparently. But we also have to get rid of all sorts of money. By my figures, 25 to 35% of Janesville can't borrow money to do home improvements that could access, that part of the population could access housing loans if we had a housing loan department, which we don't, because instead we have an intimate domain policy. If you look at Janesville GM on the other side of Janesville DGM, the river in Delvin Drive, there is no well that I've been able to locate, pollution well. There's 60 of them all around Janesville that check for pollution. That's also an intimate domain case with several homes on that side of Delvin Drive, because the city wants an A to Z guaranteed show of financial responsibility, even if the city, and I'm talking about codes, even if that citizen is on disability or over 60, they don't care. But yet, you get people in the CDB neighborhood, otherwise known as Janesville Neighborhood Services, to also sign on these documents. So when they're signing on code documents that say, "Hey, we ought to raise," that shows up somewhere. And some of them apps, they come back down on computers, they re-energize what's already there, unless it's a dead end. We have a dead end computer in Janesville Neighborhood Services. I don't think so, I know so. I'll leave the copy of this one, but say it easy. There's another five points here, too. It's also the back row to GM. With the assembly line chain, which is several thousand dollars a foot, pretty expensive to carry that, all that weight and whatnot. If we had a second-floor facility, if we're actually going to change a facility around, have we gave any thought to receiving and shipping? If we have it out the same door, it doesn't work, if we run them out the same door. How they used to do it was assembly line with assembly chain, okay? That's not going to happen probably anymore because the chain's out of there. What could happen is a second-floor loading facility in between the Janesville, or I mean Union Pacific, which is on top, and the Wisconsin Southern, which is on bottom. And Janesville has that land, that's been around for 100 years. Janesville's never collected any taxes out of that. To ask for improvement in there is not only right to do so, it would be able to bring the next model of manufacturing to that, a second-floor loading, instead of taking it up on an elevator, we take it down, and it'd be all sorts of efficient. If you can tell me where the well is on that side of the river, I would like to know, because the city manager doesn't know. I'm pretty sure none of you guys know about any well along the river that, as far as collecting pollution. And how much of these things are governing our decisions today? I had two other government bodies tell me today, "Oh yeah, there's a pollution well." I asked them where, and they said, "Oh, I know, I know there's one down there, though."
Thank you.
Dan Cunningham.
Dan Cunningham, 914 Sentinel Drive. I'm here representing Forward Janesville. The city of Janesville, Forward Janesville and Rock County 5.0 co-hosted the Housing Summit back on June 6th. We were proud to be part of this event, and pleased that the city is taking such a proactive approach to this important issue. Thanks for the work of the city of Janesville, Rock County 5.0, and dozens of community partners. The revitalization of our area's economy has been nothing short of remarkable, frankly. In the last decade, Rock County has welcomed over 130 private sector economic development projects, $2 billion in capital investments, and nearly 5,000 new jobs. And while this is all tremendous news, it has led to unprecedented challenges in our workforce and housing sectors. And while these are all "good problems to have," quote-unquote, they are problems nonetheless that deserve a lot of attention. We all understand that our area's lack of available housing represents a threat to our future economic growth and prosperity. And one of the major summit takeaways from the Housing Summit is that housing development, particularly multifamily housing development, is a full-contact sport, and that many communities have been aggressive in offering incentives to multifamily developers. As I understand it, the policy change under consideration tonight and in the future meetings would allow TIF incentives for multifamily residential projects downtown and in areas that are already zoned to allow for apartment buildings. And while we support this policy proposal at Forward Janesville, I respectfully ask that you consider going one step further. We believe that the council should consider extending TIF incentives to qualifying multifamily residential developments all over the city. I encourage you to be aggressive and to take the necessary steps to court the residential development our community needs to grow. Regardless of what you decide, we admire your willingness to tackle this problem head-on. Again, I hope that you will consider eliminating any self-imposed geographical restrictions and extend TIF incentives to multifamily developments around the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Harry Paulson.
Harry Paulson, 815 Rackworth Road, Janesville. I'd like to ask the seven of you council members to start considering these fee increases. Do we not already pay for the Fire Department personnel, the equipment in our taxes? Why are you thinking about raising taxes again, fees? It's just another form of tax. The other thing I would like you to consider is a policy change, and I mean citywide. It's always dumped on the citizens to make phone calls when there's a problem. Nationwide, they are talking about, "See something, say something." I have, in my area, within a block, I have a car that's been sitting there for three months. You have police go by there, you have city workers go by there, they're cutting the grass across the street all the time. You have garbage pickup right in front of the car. You have other things going on throughout the city. And I think it's time that the police department and the city workers have the opportunity to report something and not leave it always up to the citizens of Janesville. It's time to start some change. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Al Limbrik.
In my opinion, the destruction of the Monterey Dam and the Monterey Bay and Park area was done without sound purpose, logical sense, legitimate reason, or citizen approval. With 170 years of history and beauty enjoyed by thousands every year being destroyed at a huge unwarranted, I lost my place here, an unnecessary expense, with expected overruns just being added to our water bill. In my opinion, it certainly seems like a severe action against the will of the majority of residents, thereby causing financial woes via taxes, water rate increases, and paying interest on borrowed money. And there certainly is no honor in financially draining residents' wallets dry. On July 13th, the dam demolition begun with partial destruction of the dam, creating low water with unsightly exposed contaminated mud with a very foul-smelling odor. In my opinion, it's just devastating to see the beautiful shoreline of the Monterey Park area needlessly destroyed, and it didn't have to happen. Now, I read in a local newspaper which suggests volunteers should help to restore the site that the city just destroyed for no reason. Now, that's really ridiculous, in my opinion. As I understand it, there was an expected $250,000 grant and a citizen $200,000 offer towards a less than $720,000 repair job that the city's own experts said it would last 50 years without further expense. Yet the city wants to spend many millions instead, apparently thinking we have unlimited funds, that everybody is very rich, and because the city recently borrowed $19 million, the highest amount ever, I believe, we didn't have money, so we just keep borrowing and spending more, all senseless. In my opinion, the council members who voted for this expensive needless disaster and extensively damaged this section of our city and wasted millions of taxpayers' money should be very ashamed. How would they like to live along the now ugly, stinky river mud and future weeds, insects, and rodent-type animals? In my opinion, it will become the worst disgraceful event in the city's long history, forever known and remembered as the city's saddest, darkest day ever in Janesville, Wisconsin, on July 13th, 2018. On another matter, also the Center Avenue Bridge may have problems of weakness on the south end, and the whole bridge vibrates badly when trucks or heavy traffic go over it, and especially when the city jackhammer the dam. In my opinion, it may have to be replaced in five to 10 years, costing taxpayers more than $14 million. Better to address the infrastructure rather than this worthless river and dam removal experiment stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Chesmore.
Jim Chesmore, 538 South Main Street. I'd just like to talk about this TIF we want to take. You know, I always thought if a city was attractive and people wanted to go there, they will come. We do not have to throw bait out to build apartments for people to come to Janesville. There are business people that can do it on their own. You're using the taxpayer dollar in the city to lure money to be spent here, and then our tax dollar is very special, especially when you get to retirement age. And, you know, we want to, or you want to, constantly raise fees, tax, water bills, 25%, wheel tax just went up. Maybe that the businesses aren't coming here to build homes, maybe you should take a look at yourself when you brush your teeth in the mirror tonight. Maybe those people realize you don't listen to the citizens, you do things your way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrea Brier Moon.
Andrea Brier Moon, 339 South Locust Street. Ty Ballerood was written up for about $500 worth of electrical repairs, and he refused the permits to make those repairs, and there's a lispendance by a city employee, not the city attorney, clouding title on his house. What he needs from you is to inform the city employees to provide those permits. His dad will make sure that a licensed electrician will do those $500 worth of repairs. He is also eligible for the Community Development Block Grant for a citizen to do repairs on their home, and the catch-22 is that he can't get the grant because the lispendance is on there. He can't get the lispendance off because he doesn't do the repairs. He can't do the repairs because he can't get the permit. So I, if you could intervene, that would be great. He has no mortgage. 100 homes in the last 10 years were bought by the Community Development Block Grant money under the excuse of getting rid of blight, homes with new roofs and new furnaces, and they were hauled to the dump. This dropped the tax base before it was frozen for the TIF downtown. That's at least 100, but probably 200 homes, rental units, that are gone. Sometimes I think the left hand doesn't know what the right hand is doing, and sometimes I think people make decisions I think people make decisions with only part of the information, not realizing the negative consequences or future consequences. So, that's why, again, I think it's imperative that we have our 27 ward supervisors elected and here, and that they each have 10 appointed block captains, because then we would have communication. Your meetings would be a little longer, but I think our budget would be in a lot better shape. Another possibility is Monterey Hotel. Code inspectors are zealous, sometimes too zealous. He's being required to do new construction code criteria renovation. That's not possible. So, it will sit empty forever and house antennas on the roof until something changes. So, maybe you could intervene there. And then I want to share my concerns about the contamination that was recently exposed. 249,000 cubic yards of contamination, contaminated silt at the Monterey Dam removal site. Citizens are wading through the muck of a drained lagoon and shoreline, and soon the sediment, as it dries, will become airborne cancer-causing powder. If you can smell it, you should be wearing a mask. The public has not been properly informed. The entire drainage area between the two dams should be construction chain-link fenced off with contamination signage. 100 years of collected contamination is now exposed to the air. The water level drop was not six inches per day, it was three feet the first day, and down by probably six feet already. The contamination samples were selectively collected, not showing the true levels, and there are attachments to Rock County Case 18CV 713. Now, the upper dam gates have been opened to camouflage the drastic water level drop to the point where expensive riverfront homes upriver of both dams now have about 20 feet of mud. I guess the Aqua Jays were okay because they dredged 14 feet deep. The DNR-required precautions to prevent contamination from going downriver were not utilized, and General Motors' new owners were not given the time for their portion of their cleanup. This is a public health crisis. The public needs to be informed. Fencing and contamination signage insecurity needs to be put into place. Thank you.
Ray Jewell.
My name is Ray Jewell, 624 Cherry Street in Janesville. I grew up in town, actually, class of '74 with Doug and Chief Moore. Sort of proud, but I gotta catch up to you guys, you're far ahead of me. 14 years ago, my family and I moved back here and took up residence in the 4th Ward. And I read with interest the Janesville Gazette article by Mr. Frank Schultz in the Saturday, July 21st paper concerning this meeting tonight and the proposed TIF amendment. I'd like to quote some of that article from page nine of that paper. "The new apartment buildings would largely be higher-end units," Dale Price said, "and that doesn't help those who find it hard to pay the rent as it is. However, if current renters move up to the newer units, that frees up units with lower rents. Having more apartments available might lower rents because of supply and demand," said Kelly Betterson, City Housing Services Director. Now, at first glance, that sounds like a good thing. In fact, it sounds very similar to something President John F. Kennedy referred to often in his approach to economics in the early 1960s. According to the website English Language and Usage, President Kennedy quoted an axiom often that goes like this: "A rising tide lifts all boats," or "all the boats." This article goes on to explain that this saying, the aphorism, "A rising tide lifts all boats," is associated with the idea that improvements in the general economy will benefit all participants in that economy. And that sort of sounds like, at least to me, it sounded like the proposal before the council this evening is suggesting this idea. I personally disagree with this thinking. As the website truthout.org and an article published by the Daily Take Team, the Tom Hartman Program, on August 27, 2014, points out, President John F. Kennedy once said about economic development that a rising tide lifts all boats. Kennedy was, of course, right, but he missed something really, really important. A rising tide only lifts all boats when everyone has a boat. That article goes on to address issues in the nation. Now, I'm not up on all that. I don't have time to be up on everything that's going on, as much as I want to be. I do care about the nation, but I want to address how this affects the city of Janesville. I respectfully submit to you that we have several living in Janesville that do not have a boat. Here are some examples. Dale Hicks, the president of the Janesville Area Rental Property Association, shared these figures with me about his tenants, the ones that he serves directly. 60% have cars, 56% work, 9% are on some type of aid, and 52% don't have the ability to pay rent and security if they were to move. According to Ashley Wright, Principal Wilson School, 95% of the students that attend that school qualify for the free lunch program. That means poverty level. And according to the latest figures that I saw, the US government level for a family of four is in the $32,000 area. And in a recent op-ed Superintendent of Schools, Stephen Puffall, wrote that 47% of the whole district is in that same boat. 47% of all our kids that go to school, public school, in Janesville are in poverty, living in poverty. And I could go into what Project 1649 says and what GIFTs said. When they opened their new building, they thought they were doing something good, and they were. They went from 25 people that they could serve every night, and then it was raised to 42 when they opened their facility, but then they found out there's so many more that are homeless in Janesville. And, you know, I look around me and I think that the boat is sinking fast. Maybe for a lot of these people, there's no boat at all. So, what do we want to do? Let a sinking boat continue to sink, or send in a lifeboat? I choose the latter. So, please reconsider this proposal with more thought to the poor and disadvantaged in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Johnson. There's no more that signed up, but Maggie did indicate that there was one person that wanted to speak that didn't sign up.
Okay. So, anyone that came in later that wishes to address the council, you're welcome to come forward. Sir?
Hello, everyone. My name is Michael Bell. I stay at 2816 Randolph Road, Janesville, Wisconsin, here. I see we do have a lot of problems, and I know we can't change all our problems overnight, but I am willing to address some of them. What I propose today is a Rock County In-Touch Outreach Jail and Prison slash Community Program. Within this program, we've set up, within our description, our program for returning citizens is a multifaceted program that supports people being released from jail or prison. As they transition back into the community, our program goal is to connect returning citizens to needed supporting issues and help them to sexually adjust to living back in their communities. All of the core components are designed to provide transitional individuals with job knowledge, experience, support system, and a stable life. Returning citizens meet regularly with an outreach worker to create an individualized case plan for their future. All their needs are addressed, including employment, education, housing, personal needs, spiritual needs, and family relations. We would connect with them, we would connect them with Wisconsin Work Development to cover all aspects of employment training, from resume writing to interview skills. Our program would discuss and assist people in obtaining their identification documents, hygiene, education, employment, family relations, money management, life skills, as well as mental illness. We have taken the initiative to impact the hearts of incarcerated people, as well as their families, and assisting them to make changes in their lives and assist them in becoming filled with hope that they can have and live a successful life. Our target population is any person that has been incarcerated or family member that has been impacted by incarceration. I believe this is a major problem, and I heard so many times the speaker spoke about taxes being raised and homelessness, and it sure is a major problem because, for those of you who don't know, we spent $1.5 billion in the prison system alone last year. And Rock County is just under Milwaukee with crime and drugs, and this reentry program would stop the recidivism, as well as bring down the crime, and also bring down the economy to be able to build the economy. We won't have to spend so much in the prisons. We won't have to be continually allowing our monies to be taken from us, but we actually put something into these people's lives, actually, to build them up to be successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that came in that wishes to address the council this evening? Anyone else? With that, we'll move on. I believe a city manager update with Mr. City Manager Mark Frick.
Good evening, council members, ladies and gentlemen. A few updates for you this evening. First of all, we've been working for several months now on the Court Street two-way conversion, and so just wanted to let the council and the community know that Phase 1 of that conversion will happen this Friday, July 27th. So, if you think about it, from Academy Street all the way up to Adams Street, along Court Street is the project's scope, we've had some challenges with some AT&amp;T rework that's occurred between Atwood and Adams, and so we're prepared this Friday to convert the conversion between Academy and Atwood into two-way traffic, and then as AT&amp;T is able to finish up their work from Atwood all the way out to Adams Street, that will follow later in August, but that date is to be determined. Pavement markings are currently being done, the bumpouts and associated curb gutter and other traffic enhancements have been done, and so it's time to go ahead and make that happen. So, that's going to happen on Friday, and then Atwood to Adams will happen at the end of August, based upon AT&amp;T's work. But I would encourage folks to visit our city website/news, because we'll have updates on how that transition is affecting any kind of JTS bus routes or any other rerouting that might be required. So, prepare for this Friday. The other thing is really a good news story. You know, I always talk about how generous the Janesville community is either with funding or with timing or resources, services, programs, and our fire department just got a very nice boost with two grants. One came from the Janesville Foundation in the amount of $15,000, and that allows the fire department to purchase what we call tactical emergency medical support equipment, or TEMS, equipment, but that's essentially, you know, ballistic helmets, ballistic vests, things that allow fire department personnel to be forward in a crisis situation with our police as they move forward. And so, very, very thankful to the Janesville Foundation for that $15,000 grant. And then also, JFD received $6,800 from Firehouse Subs and their grant organization to purchase some additional equipment for our dive team, and so very, very thankful to those two organizations to help support our Janesville Fire Department. They do great work, but there's only so much money to go around, and this helps on some of those areas that they're not able to get to at this time. One thing that the council approved this past year for our 2018 budget cycle was to transition our ordinances from a laserfish SharePoint kind of system, very difficult to search, and we've transitioned that to a web-based version called MuniCode, and so that transition is now complete. The website is live. If you go to our city website/ ordinance, it'll take you to MuniCode, and essentially, all of our city ordinances are online in that MuniCode system, and I think the benefit of it is that it's much more searchable and user-friendly, and so hopefully the public will find that to be of benefit. But that was a great decision by the deputy city manager and the clerk treasurer to bring that forward and move the community forward. Some upcoming events that I'd like to highlight. First of all, July 26th, so that's Thursday night, we've got the Northeast Regional Trail Extension Community Engagement Forum. That's the second one in that series. It's going on at Harmony School, be from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. August 3rd, the council chambers rededication ceremony is going on from 3:00 to 4:30 in the afternoon. It's a Friday afternoon. Starting to take shape, we're about two weeks out, and so things are looking good up there. But, you know, that's 50 years to the date of the municipal building being dedicated back in 1968, and so encourage folks to come out and attend that and check out the fourth-floor renovations. August 6th, the council, the staff will present to the council kind of where we're at on our initial budget projections for year 2019 and ask for some guidance from the council as the staff moves into its exercises, if you will, of formulating and putting together the 2019 budget. But that'll go from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. That's in Room 416 at City Hall. August 7th, our police department continues to host National Night Out, a great way for the police department to engage the community and for the community to engage the police department. It happens right out on Wall and Jackson Streets in front of the police department in the vicinity of City Hall, goes from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Always a great event. Every year, it seems to get larger and larger and larger, and so encourage folks to come out and participate and enjoy the evening. Hopefully, it won't be as hot as it was last year. I seem to remember it being a little on the warm side. August 17th, Movie in the Park featuring Wonder, that will be at Optimus Park, and our Recreation Division does that, and so that begins right at dusk. And then August 25th, we've got Janesville Kids Triathlon is at Rockport Park and Pool beginning at 9:00 a.m. As always, there's lots of ways to get information about what's happening in the city of Janesville. I'd encourage folks to take a look at Park Place Views during the month of August. It's going to feature our Parks Director, Colin Slaypack. You can watch that on JATV, which is Charter Channel 994, or view that on YouTube. You can sign up to receive emails, press releases, emergency updates, you name it, at our city website/ email list. You give us your email address, and then we'll push information to you. You can call us and get information at 755-3000 or 755-3177. You can like us on Facebook, follow us on Twitter, receive emergency updates via Nixle from the JPD. If you scan the QR code that's on the screen, it will take you to that email list signup website, and then always, I encourage you to go to the city's website. There's lots of information, more than, you know, most folks probably need, but there's a little bit of everything for everyone. And so, pending that, that's all I have this evening.
Any questions of the city manager? I just had a quick one. On the Court Street conversion, do we have signage planned for indicating around up and down the street that where it's going to two ways? Not thinking just so much for local, but people coming from out of town once in a month or once a year that come to Janesville, we don't want them to get confused or wonder why there's cars coming at them.
Yeah, we'll have signage out there. I would tell the community that the double-stripe yellow line down the middle of the roads are a pretty good indicator that it's a two-way street, but, you know, people get confused, and so we'll make sure that there's plenty of signage out there. And I know that DPW and the police department are coordinating for, you know, a proper movement as we transition that morning from two-way to one-way.
Just wanted to let the public know that.
Yep.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I just have one question for the city manager. The status of the pickleball courts at Riverside, how is that coming, and are we staying within our budget on that?
Yeah, you know, whether we're staying within our budget, I don't have any perspective on right now. Obviously, there's a contract in place to do that, but I talked with the folks from the pickleball court program last Wednesday, I think it was, and they had, we'd pulled off the old asphalt, and they were laying the base for the pickleball courts, and so it's begun, but whether it's on budget at this point, I don't know. But I can find that information out for you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? That being, we'll move on to Items 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12, which we'll all pass under consent unless somebody alerts me that they would like to pull it. Number 6, regular city council meeting minutes of July 9, 2018. Number 7- Number 7, licenses and recommendations. Number 8, financial statements for the month of June 2018. Number 9, consideration and action on a proposed resolution approving the final plat of Redwood Terrace First Edition. That's File Resolution Number 2018-1563. Number 10, consideration and action on a developer's MOU agreement to extend public infrastructure for the Redwood Terrace First Edition. Number 11, consideration and action on a proposed resolution authorizing the city to submit a competitive discretionary grant application to the Federal Transit Administration, and that's File Resolution Number 2018-1566. And number 12, consideration and action on a proposed resolution in commendation of Diana McDonald for her more than 18 years of service to the city of Janesville, and that's File Resolution Number 2018-1559. All of those will pass under consent except for...
I want to just pull number 7. I just want to abstain on it. That's my employer, so...
Any other one? So we will pull number 7. Any other ones pass under consent. Would just want to call attention to number 12, Diana McDonald. She was unable to attend this evening, but I think her 18 years of service deserves a little applause and recognition, so if you join me, we can give her a hand. Number 7, Councilmember Jorgensen.
Yeah, I just wanted to abstain on this one.
Okay.
Move approval.
A motion by Councilmember Wolf, seconded by Councilmember Conley to approve license and recommendations. Any other comments? Seeing none, please vote.
Aye.
And that passes 6 to 1 with everyone voting in favor. Councilmember Jorgensen voting against.
Abstaining.
Abstained. Abstained, excuse me. So please amend the record to reflect that. 6-0-1. Next one, Old Business, Second Reading, Public Hearing and Action on a Proposed Ordinance Amending Chapter 15.01.280 of the Code of General Ordinances Regarding Pool Requirements. It's File Ordinance Number 2018-727. And Mr. Clifford.
Second reading? Second reading?
Second reading.
File Ordinance Number 2018-727, an ordinance amending and creating new requirements for swimming pools with penalties for violations thereof as set forth in JGO 15.80.110.
Thank you. Mr. Clifford.
Good evening. Tom Clifford, Building Director of the City of Janesville. Tonight, the proposed ordinance amendment reestablishes the swimming pool height threshold, requiring a permit and fence from the current requirement of 30 inches or more to greater than 30 inches. In 2011, there was an adopted amendment that reduced the fence height from five feet to four feet. And the 2011 amendment also regulates, regulated expanding pools, but inadvertently required a fence and a permit to be for 30-inch pool, which was not the intent at that time. Prior to the 2011 amendment, permit and fence was required for a pool of 30 inches or more, and this amendment corrects the language that was unintended in 2011 to revert back to the 30 inches or more. In addition to correcting the wording, the proposed amendment also prohibits extension cords for pool equipment connections and directs the pool owners to the state of Wisconsin and national electric code requirements for the pool pump setup for the pools. And staff recommends that following a public hearing, the city council adopt the proposed ordinance and be happy to answer any questions.
I just have one.
Yes.
So if somebody bought it when it was legal, a 30-inch pool, what are their duties under this new change?
Nothing. So if this is passed tonight, it'll be greater than 30 inches. So, and it's been the process that we have of over greater than 30. It was inadvertent that the language changed in 2011, and actually, a customer asked the question, well, why does it say this in the ordinance when it says this in the, in the handout that we have? So nothing will happen to the, they're legal.
Okay. That's all I needed to know. Anyone else?
Well, this is for new installation of pools, right?
Correct.
Okay.
What's the wishes of council? Oh, public hearing, sorry. Thank you. Thank you very much. Well, now open a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to address the council on this issue of pool requirements is welcome to step forward. Our second call for public hearing. Third call for public hearing. We now close the public hearing. What is the wishes of council? Councilmember Gruber.
I move approval of File Resolution 2018-727 related to the Code of General Ordinances and their requirements for pools.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Gruber, seconded by Councilmember Jorgensen. Anything further? Anything further?
Nope.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, please vote. And that passes unanimously with all council members in favor of that. Next item, New Business. Discussion and provide possible guidance on the use of tax incremental financing for multifamily developments. And just before Gail makes her presentation, it's not a secret that I'm in this business and that we may be considering, regardless of what we decide on this, to do an apartment building sometime in the future timed undetermined. So I asked the city attorney to give me some guidance. Wald?
Yes, and based on these facts and circumstances and the ethics statutes and the city council policy, you are permitted to discuss and to attempt to persuade the council on the topic, but you just should abstain from any action in terms of voting a certain way.
Okay, thank you. And there is no action scheduled for this evening, so on advice of, or the permission of council and the ethics, I will be participating in this discussion, but I will refrain from any votes if and when they ever come before the council. Thank you. Gail?
Thank you, Council President Mark Lang. Gail Price, Economic Development Director. Also here with us this evening is Todd Teese from Elders and Associates. They have done a lot of work for us on TIF project plans, and certainly, it's a resource to have here this evening as they are the consummate professionals when it comes to TID and its use. Want to give you a quick summary of, or recap of, the Housing and Development Forum. So we, in conjunction with Rock 5O and Forward Janesville, we created this event to really help to bring out the issues that we have in the community regarding our housing deficiencies, what's the impacts of those, and what's the potential outcome if we continue to follow the path that we are going down. Within that, there was a panel discussion with developers who are doing multifamily development in other communities and other states, and really, it was an opportunity to get some feedback as to what is going on in other communities that are similar to us. And ultimately, tertiary markets similar to Janesville are providing assistance. Basically, in many of our communities that are our size, the rents that would be associated or the rents that could be gained in those communities really do not cover the cost of new construction and what the expected amenities are when you talk about multifamily development in, in the 21st century. So markets like Chicago, Milwaukee, Madison, they can garner the rents needed to pay and make a project profitable. And these smaller communities like us, not so, not so much. So as we moved on to the roundtable discussions and the feedback from those roundtable discussions, really, it was consistent that TIF should be modified to provide assistance for more projects. And we'll walk through a little bit about where we're at today and then again, what we're proposing here. So I want to touch a little bit on the five types of tax increment finance districts. So really, our focus today is going to be on the blighted, mixed-use, and rehabilitation/conservation districts. Environmental remediation and industrial really don't apply to this, and in fact, Janesville doesn't have any environmental remediation tax increment districts. Now, when we talk about the specifics of the use of these types of districts, your blighted and rehabilitation/conservation districts are focused really on geographic areas that are blighted. So at least within those geographic areas, 50% of the buildings or the properties have to be blighted to use a designation as a blighted TIF district. Same thing with rehabilitation/conservation. So at least 50% of the properties within that geographic area have to be designated as in need of rehabilitation/conservation. Now, that can also be an underutilized property. So the former Menards is an example of where we've applied that and used that, and certainly the downtown. The mixed-use district is a little bit of, a little bit different. So within that district, you would have to have a maximum, you could have a maximum area of 35% of the geographic area of the district being designated for residential use. And now, the statute refers to as newly-platted areas. So you can use a mixed-use TIF district in a newly-platted area. It's just that that area is for residential, it needs to be less than 35%, 35% or less of the overall district. Now, those other land uses can be a myriad of things. They could be green space, they could be stormwater detention, they could be commercial, they could be schools, churches, whatever that is. Just again, it's focused on 35% residential. Traditional neighborhood development is a provision in state statute that was adopted in, I believe it was 2002, really to help promote kind of more compact, dense developments and creating a tool or requiring communities to have a tool to facilitate those. Now, we do that through our Planned Unit of Development ordinance, which, again, we won't get into that in detail today, but that also is allowed to have newly-platted areas. Ultimately, you know, it really affects those areas that haven't previously been developed. Now, we use mixed-use district for TID 29, which is the south end of Milton Avenue, and that was appropriated at that location because there was a myriad of commercial uses down there, or it was also a thought that there might be some housing that would be developed within that district when we did that, I believe it was about 12 years ago. So what you received in your pack, it was a copy of Council Policy 61B, which is our commercial economic development policy. Now, when you dig into that, that policy breaks down areas that are downtown versus non-downtown. And the reason why we did that was we had a history or a long history of very detailed what we would do downtown, and we had not had a history of doing commercial economic development outside of the downtown very much. So we basically created a non-downtown provision when we did three commercial corridors. So that was the Milton Avenue, the south end of Milton Avenue, the Court Street, and the Center Avenue TID districts. Now, the other two are no longer in place because during the recession, when the values dropped, we went ahead and closed out those TID districts because they were never going to make up the increment. But we may go back and have that discussion again someday. Now, when we think about downtown, we allow it. That particular district is a rehabilitation/conservation district. We allow up to 15 years of the increment created by the project to be dedicated towards our return back to the development. And what we're really recognizing there is that in the downtown area, there's going to be additional development costs. It's going to be assemblage, it's going to be tearing down blighted buildings, it's going to be maybe some environmental remediation or all of those things. And so when we look at, again, downtown and other similar areas, there's usually some extra costs associated with that. So when we look at the downtown, you know, or non-downtown, that's really focused on rehabilitation/conservation, blighted or mixed-use. It could be any of those. Now, when we further modified this policy a couple of years ago, we really wanted to say, we didn't want to do new retail development. I mean, retail is a cutthroat business, it's very geographically oriented as to where the new areas are going, and we really wanted to promote redevelopment of specific underutilized sites, and certainly the Menards, and that has panned out and been very successful. I think Ross opened this weekend. So, so good, good example of that application. In that case, we would maximize, or max would be 10 years of the increment returned back to the project. Now, in that particular instance, we went a little more than that just because of the nature, the finances of the project. But the policy does not specifically discuss residential or multifamily. In the downtown, in the project plan, it's in there. It's, we've actually got designated sites for multifamily, and in fact, we're open to other locations because the zoning's going to allow it in a traditional mixed-use environment. So ultimately, when we think about how that gets applied, gets used, it gets back to the overall question is, where do we want to promote multifamily development? Hence, which is where we've landed with our recommendation. We want to facilitate TIF assistance for multifamily downtown infill that's outside of downtown but not newly-platted areas. And again, it's focused on areas where we've got infrastructure in place, the investments in the ground, we're not getting the highest return on our investment in those areas, and redevelopment sites. Now, one of the things that although we may, you may provide us direction with regards to modification of the policy, that does not necessarily mean that if somebody walks through my door and says, I want to do a project, I've got a gap in my numbers or my finances, can you help me close that with tax increment financing? Because of the way the state statutes are set up, is that that doesn't guarantee if we change the policy that every site's going to be eligible for tax increment financing. So that's, I, that's really on a case-by-case basis and talking about what those boundaries are and what the overall size of the geographic area is. So I just want to caution the council as we move forward in this discussion tonight because, again, every site's going to stand on its own merits and be unique. So again, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but tonight, our recommendation is let's focus on downtown and focus on infill sites. Thank you.
I'm going to start off with the first one. You've got infill outside of the downtown area is not newly-platted. I would like a more definite definition of what infill is and is not.
So when, if you go to Webster's Dictionary, it basically, and I'm paraphrasing, I don't have it memorized, but, and it's also pretty typical in a planner's realm, that an infill site is a site that's basically surrounded by some kind of development or a majority of the sites are developed, and you may have a site that's underdeveloped or underutilized, or somebody decides that I can chop off a chunk of my ground, and that can be for another development site. That's really an infill site. So it's an area that's, it's generally bounded by other development, and you got a site that hasn't been developed for whatever reason.
Okay, so we did, the city grows out and butts up to a township road that becomes a city road, but it's right on the edge of town. Would that be considered infill by your definition?
You know, from a general planner's perspective, I generally would not look at that as an infill site because it's a newly-plated. And this is one of the difficulties because the state statute refers to newly-platted areas, but there's no definition for newly-platted areas in statute. So, you know, you may have an area that has been preliminarily platted but not final-platted. Well, is that platted? In a planner's realm, you've made the plans to lay the utilities out and so forth, you know, I could look at that as an infill site. And, you know, we haven't gone through an exercise to identify all of these places in town where this might be a discussion point, and I don't think it's really warranted. And when you look at our TIF policy, basically, somebody has to come to us to talk to us about, I need this from you.
Does newly-platted go back in time, or is it newly-platted because of this development?
I would look at it as back in time because, you know, not every site is going to be configured to the appropriate configuration that's needed for development in the 21st century. Maybe the area is platted, that was appropriated in the 1920s, but not necessarily today. Again, some of that's going to depend on, you know, what the product is being proposed and what comes forward.
Okay. In the non-downtown area, there's a reference to majority of structures 40 years or more. I would think non-downtown, there'd be relatively lack of structures that we would... I would think, non-downtown, there'd be relatively lack of structures that we would worry about unless it's an old farmhouse or a barn, which is going to come down anyways. But the 40 years intrigues me. Would there be any sort of test on the fact that a property would have to have been developable but not developed over 40 years or more before it could be considered?
You know, that's certainly, we can change that if it's appropriate, or you can even quantify it as saying, you know, "We're going to do it a little bit differently for multifamily if you wanted to." You know, we certainly put the 40 years in there because our concern when we did the last modifications was that we didn't want to get pulled into doing new retail development projects with TID. Those need to stand on their own merit. So, you know, it could be rephrased to say, "A majority of the area was developed 40 years ago or 20 years ago." What's the number? I mean, I don't think there's any magic bullet for that. It's, what's the comfort level is the, you know, what that gap is between when the rest of the area developed and this particular site.
I'm trying really hard not to pull out specific ones, but I'm going to do two. One, that was in the Gazette article, is the poster child, and that would be the boys' baseball on Woodman Road.
Yeah, and in that area, the majority of the properties to the north end of the south were developed initially 40 years ago or more. So that would be, to me, an easy, yeah, it's an infill, it's got everything developed around it, and it's a gap that it had an interim land use, so it was a baseball field for youth for the longest time. But now, is the market going, the market's ripe for that to get redeveloped, and certainly, from a planning perspective, the comprehensive plan designates that as appropriate for some kind of residential transitional use, so.
Okay. I'm going to make up a hypothetical one. I'm just going to say, "I own it. It's on the east side, it's, you know, 50 acres identified on a comprehensive plan for appropriate for multifamily. It's got houses on one side, it's got a terrain problem on the other that you can't build on, and it backs up to a city park, and on the other side, there's a church." Without knowing any more specifics than that, is that something, it's never been developed but it's got a street stubbed into it, would that be something that you would consider infill?
Probably not.
Okay. Those are, that's where I see a real difficulty on this one because one person's definition of infill is some, is not somebody else's. And it looks like we're working into a case-by-case basis where the rules are nebulous. If it looks like it's something that would, we would want, and we, in parentheses, we probably could bend the definition of infill to make that work. But if it was something that we didn't think was appropriate to a different developer, we might say, "Our definition does not include you," and we're going to get developer versus developer, you know, "Why did we allow this but not this one?" And I can see that being a really difficult road for the council to set a policy and for the city to follow that policy. That's why my first question was, can we find a definition of infill that would give you the flexibility that, obviously, that you need, but would make it very clear before somebody wastes a lot of time and effort trying to decide on a site if it was doable or not?
The, when you draft policy, I mean, you cannot predict every, every situation. And, you know, we laugh about that all the time at City Hall about, "I would have never predicted, you know, X." And certainly, you're not going to, the intent here is, is that we want to promote multifamily development, we need the units in the community, what's our first focus? I think we can all say that downtown arise, where we've got millions of dollars going into infrastructure, is priority number one. And certainly, from what we heard at the Housing and Development Summit, is that that, the expectation of being able to live in that urban environment in an urban-type setting is extremely important. But we also see other opportunities in other locations in the community that we think it would be appropriate for, you know, land use purposes, for, you know, they're on a bus line, whatever that may be, that, that's still something we should promote. And we recognize that there is a gap in projects right now, but I don't know that we're going to facilitate it for everyone in the community. And I think, for me, one of the key points here is, is that section in the statute that says newly platted developments. I mean, it's difficult for me to say, a farm field that has, you know, remained in agricultural use and is agriculturally valued and never been platted, or, you know, any development is very difficult to support when we're talking about, we've got other areas that we really want to focus our energies on, so.
Now, in another direction, do you know right now what the vacancy rate is on multifamily in Janesville?
We continue to hear 1% or less.
I would say that's generous.
And, you know, as, as an example, Woodsview turns away literally 10 people a week because they do not have units available.
Okay. And so I will point out, from our experience looking at ours, that the cost of construction is going up 10% every year. And three years ago, when we looked at this really hard, we could not bring a project online that would cover the rents that we thought people would pay. In fact, the number that we brought in was double what the current rent is that we were charging on units right across the street, i.e., we put it aside. So we have a demand, and we're not able to do a supply financially right now with Janesville. The rents here are low, and that's great for our citizens because they're enjoying low rents, and it attracted people to Janesville for many years that found that they could live in Janesville and commute to other cities where the rents were higher, and kind of get the best of both, financially and whatever. But this gap is the problem. And I was wondering, if we use the TIF, what are the definitions on gap that you're looking for that you could, we always talk about gap financing. I'm thinking that's what we're looking at here, is the gap between bringing something to market and what the market will bear.
So when we talk about gap on our residential multifamily development, the discussion that you usually have is, where are the historic rents in the community? And the top end of, in this community, it's basically 95 cents a square foot. For new construction that has the amenities that are seeing being demanded in places like Madison and Milwaukee and so forth, the number needs to be $1.25 to $1.30 or more. And so when you look at that revenue generation versus the cost of the construction, we would use tax increment financing to fill the middle. That what should get to a developer to a reasonable return on the investment, and what's reasonable? Reasonable is, is there another, another investment mechanism that can make more money than, than, or, well, more money than the real estate, given the risk? So the rule of thumb, 10, 12, 15%, that window. You know, if they, if they can get more, most likely, they're going to say, "I'm going to make that investment that in another place." What they're looking for is to be able to say, "Okay, this is the right project, and, you know, where can that assistance come and get me to that 12%?" Because if they make a profit there, they're going to make, you know, another investment in the community, and we have tools within our TIF agreements for lookbacks. We make sure that they're not, you know, significantly increasing the rents and things like that where they're making more than what the pro forma had said. So that's, that's generally how we go about doing that.
Okay. So I've got more questions, but I'm going to open it up to council. I don't want to dominate the discussion, so, Councilmember Wolf.
Gail, just so I'm clear, we have several properties around the city that are currently in ag use because the owner benefits from substantially lower taxes because it's an ag use.
Sure.
One I can see from my deck without being specific. So I would assume those would still be considered infill. They've been that way forever. Surrounding has developed, I wouldn't say necessarily 40 years, but 20-plus years there's been surrounding infrastructure. Are you excluding those as infill off the top of your head?
No, and I actually have a great example. I think we've all seen the cornfield next to Woodman's, what, Liberty Lane. There's that farm field, they're ag use, everything around it's been developed for the last 40 years.
So you'd consider that infill?
I would call that infill, even though it's been agriculturally used and it's agriculturally valued. And it was probably unfair of me to reference a farm field, but, you know, that's one of the issues, is what's been the long-term land use. And agricultural is almost all the time, is that it's never been developed. And so, you know, it's very hard for me to say, "Okay, that's, you know, not newly platted," or, so that's, that's, there's not a clear delineation, and the statute is ambiguous to that.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear on that. So it's, ag use isn't necessarily excluding it. It's everything around it, the infrastructure, supporting infrastructure, so to speak, around it, is all complete, so it possibly could be considered
Yes.
infill. All right. Do we have any issues with, every once in a while, we get a report of where we are in terms of our TIF guidance with the state in terms of limits. If we open this up to other areas, are we going to, within guessing, are we going to have issues with using our TIF availability?
Yeah, and my apologies, you asked me that question on the phone today, and that, I did not get the number, but I can tell you, we have the ability to increase or create additional TID districts. We are not near our cap. So we've got plenty of capacity room to be able to create TID districts.
Okay. And what are the challenges, given current law? Did I hear you say that newly platted or newly platted annexed properties are excluded by state law, or we may want to exclude those by our own internal policy?
So if you use a mixed-use district as the mechanism, there's the reference in the statute to newly platted areas.
Okay.
Not defined. 35% of the geographic area or less of the district. And so that is state law. Now, we can choose to be more strict than state law under our policies. And you look at our policy, we have not been as liberal as maybe other communities in the use of TID.
So said a different way, or maybe a way that I can understand it, if we would annex X number of acres, and it was all going to be for multifamily development, since that's a new annexation, a newly platted, that would be excluded by state law?
Again, depends on the geographic boundary, what you're including for other land uses. But most likely, as you've described, that would not be
Assume they're on the edge of town, never been, you know, we're moving northeast to areas we have not annexed yet or had planned, and we would do a fresh annexation strictly for multifamily, that would not be eligible.
You've got to have mixed use.
Okay.
So a variety of land uses.
Very good. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Farrell? Gail, I appreciate the fact you mentioned TID 29 that we have talked quite a bit about the last few years. It now has $259,000 in it. As you said, this was before your time, it's been going 11 years, about 30 grand a year, and the prospects of using that for business seems really not likely, as we have communicated several times. Are you saying that baseball field, would that, this TIF be eligible for that, or would we have to create a new TIF if we wanted to have development there? I'm a little confused.
Yeah, not, not to bore you with the intricacies of the details, but there's a couple of ways to go about it.
Okay.
TID 29 does not include boys' baseball, so you could either modify the district to allow a half-mile expenditure, which that one does not, or you could modify the boundaries of the TID and include boys' baseball. That is a mixed-use TID, so the land use would be appropriate. And then there are some other nuances that I won't get into, but, you know, is there enough years left on the TID to make a project work or something like that? You know, the other thing, and I live near there, I drive by Creston Park a lot, what is the long-term adaptive reuse of Creston Park in the 21st century, Amazon-dominated retail world? Is that, in the long term, a viable shopping center, or is that a redevelopment site? And, you know, in my magic utopian planner, I would love to relocate, you know, Schnucks closer to Milton Avenue, and the rest could be redeveloped for multifamily. But, you know, that's just me, the utopian planner, speaking. But that, that would be, you know, a redevelopment site, that would be an infill site, so.
Okay.
And that would be inappropriate if we modified that district and picked that area up, that, it could be done.
Okay. The other question I have is, we're targeting, from what I get, like, upper-level rents, is that correct? In other words, we certainly don't want somebody who's going to be able to collect Section 8 rents and be able to give them some sort of TIF. You understand what I'm saying? Would we have some specifically disallowing that?
Well, it's
Or not?
You know, it's all about what the financial package looks like. You know, there are other mechanisms to create housing for our workforces or our, you know, underserved. It's, you know, there's other, there's just other methods. And, and, you know, it's a Section 42, which the benefit is on the income tax side, and that's usually a mixed rent. So you've got some paying full freight, you've got some paying a discounted rent. You've got low-income tax credits, which is another mechanism, and that's a very competitive program. The state actually has created a new program where there's a, kind of a non-competitive four-and-four, which is as good as the very competitive nine. So I think there's other mechanisms for that, and vouchers can be used anywhere. So let's say, for instance,
Right.
somebody moves out of a, out of a house into an apartment building that just got built with our assistance, well, that house just got freed up, and maybe somebody with a voucher who couldn't find housing could go land in that house. So it goes back to, we got a need for units, and if we're freeing up units, it doesn't matter that they're on the top end because we're going to have units all over the rest of the market that are opened up and available for people.
Right. Okay. The final question I have is, was there a unit or a development that went in into Center Avenue recently, apartments or, do I remember that correctly?
Yeah, there is two 16-unit buildings being started by Mark Robinson on the far south end of, down by Redwood Terrace.
Right. My question is, if they did it, what prompted them to decide to invest in it if you, we feel we now, they didn't ask for TIF or anything?
Yeah, there was no request. Apparently, they believe that they can make it work from a market standpoint and their cost of construction. And, you know, every developer situation is different.
Sure.
And, and I just, I can't answer for that
Right.
because it didn't come through me.
Right.
That's directly through Building and Development Services.
But they didn't request any
No request.
protest or anything? Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Gilbert? You've done a great job of taking away a couple of my points that I'd like to make. It's a supply and demand sort of thing as it relates to capacity between commercial-industrial use and residential use. And we've got state limits in terms of how much of an area can be designated as a TID. Go back through the answer you gave to Councilmember Wolf and clarify for me, how do you deal with that competing interest? Do we have capacity to do that?
Competing, I'm sorry, could you repeat the question, Councilmember?
Residential TIF reimbursement or TIF incentives versus the current policies that is primarily industrial-commercial?
Yeah.
Are we taking away from industrial-commercial potential at all, or?
You know, in a, in a theoretical sense, if we supported a development with a district using the half-mile expenditure ability, then you're not recapturing the increment created by the new project. So you would be spreading the use of the TID dollars to areas outside of that geographic area. So, so that might be a problem for a district that, you know, we decided to do the half-mile boundary. You know, again, it goes back to what is in the project plan anticipated to be spent to support development within the geographic area. So that's where we make the conscious decision as to whether or not we make the boundary amendment, capture that increment, and then continue to build that pot for the other projects or not. So it is something we would consider as we look to either amend or create a district.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, just to reiterate, the low-income affordable housing element potential is something that can be addressed by other parts of our statute or ordinances or?
Well, and, and so, I'll touch on that very briefly. So there's other methods for that, but one of the things that Deputy Manager McHugh and I have talked about is that there is a provision in statute that allows us to hold open a TID district for an additional year. What that does is we can take that additional year of increment, and we're talking about increment across all taxing jurisdictions, can be funneled into a fund for housing purposes. You know, the direction from Deputy Manager to me is, we need to do this, that is something that we're gonna be returning to you as we have districts that come to closure, is that we'll have you approve a resolution to capture that additional year of increment, and we're gonna use that to help fund some of our housing programs.
Like, I'm sorry.
But if you look at the age of the TIDs that we have in place, some of them are relatively young.
Yeah.
So that return on that, that particular opportunity is, is very limited, isn't it?
It's, we've got some time before I think the bigger ones. We are talking about closing TID 21, and that would be, in two years, that would be available, if I recall correctly. TID 22 is, got less than five years on it. That has a significant amount of increment annually that's being used to pay debt service right now. So we do see some on the horizon that could be a significant funding source, but again, it's not today and it's not tomorrow.
No. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Conley?
Yeah, I wanna continue with that conversation, capturing another year of TID for a housing program like what?
Well, that depends on, you know, the direction, you know, for, and really, I, that the decision as to how that's applied really is to housing and community services. I mean, I don't necessarily, you know, I'm not necessarily engaged in that. Kelly Bedesem could better answer that. I certainly have some ideas, but ultimately, they know the community better when it comes to those housing programs. So, but when we think about consolidated plan and going through that consolidated plan process, there you have the CDA Board that is very engaged in that and certainly can provide some direction. But again, I'll let them better address that, just because they know that market better than us.
Well, that helps, so that's the process it would go through. You, your department wouldn't develop a plan, you'd turn it over to Neighborhood Services?
Absolutely.
Okay. And in the past, we've had mixed rents, for example, the Marshall Apartments were set up that way, continue to be that way, correct?
Correct.
Is there any reason why we wouldn't wanna do that with a new TID?
No, no, there's really no reason not to do that, but, you know, whenever, it's really dependent upon the comfort level of the developer and what, what we in the economic development world call the capital stack. It's all those pieces of the financing that get stacked on top of each other to make the project happen. Really, it's, it's what their comfort level is. You know, we can kinda steer people one way or another, or we could advocate, you know, certainly on the low-income tax credit side, we can advocate for that. Certainly, it's with the competitive process, but again, it goes back to what is the developer comfortable with from a financing mechanism. I mean, we haven't seen a Section 42 project like Marshall Apartments since Marshall Apartments, so, so what's the reason for that? And I wish I had a better answer, 'cause I, I don't, 'cause we certainly have a need for the units.
We could require it, though, if we're using tax dollars, right?
You could, but is, not every developer's comfortable with a Section 42 project, or, or, you know, whatever other kind of mixed income. You know, so do we let the development community decide that? You know, certainly Madison does it a different way. They take increment created by some of these new housing projects along Washington, East Washington, and they funnel that back to a fund.
So there are lots of opportunities to consider, how we make.
I think there's some other reasonable opportunities for that, yes.
Okay. You talked about the gap being 10 to 15%. Talk about the difference between thinking over that way and pay-as-you-go. Are we talking about the same thing?
So, so gap isn't usually 10 or 15%. The, the gap is the difference between reasonable margin and what their projected margin's gonna be.
Right.
So when we think about, I'm sorry, Councilmember, could you repeat that last part of the question?
Um.
Oh, pay-as-you-go.
Pay-as-you-go, is that somehow related to the gap financing still?
It is.
Though we're not giving money upfront?
Yeah, so there's basically two ways to do it, the money upfront or the pay-as-you-go. And, and so, when we think about pay-as-you-go, it's about time value of money. So that dollar is worth more today than it is tomorrow or five years from now. So what happens in a pay-as-you-go situation is the developer, you know, finds other funding to, you know, finance that, and they're using the pay-go return to pay off that, that debt. And so, it's, it's up to the developer to, you know, get that secured. And the key for us is, is that it's very much driven by the actual return for the project, and it helps limit our risk. And so that's why, you know, as we continue to talk about this as an option, it's really, you know, it's a risk minimizer for us, so.
Sure. And is that something that you foresee us requiring for residential TIFs, or just part of the toolbox?
It's, it's gonna be part of the toolbox, and it's gonna be as on a, as needed or discussed basis. So, for instance, Cobblestone Hotel, although it's not housing, we evaluated that project based on doing it upfront or the pay-go, and it could not work with the pay-go. So it's gonna be a case-by-case basis, and just right back to, you know, each project stands, stands on its own merits and is negotiated on its own merits.
So, help me with the resident who says, I had to pay for my own house, why would we pad a developer's pockets with a TIF and give them money upfront, for example?
We have an extreme need for units here in the community, and we know that there's a cost difference between what the rents are and what the construction is, and it's not financially viable for a developer. We also, when we get back to talking about a rise in downtown, we wanna create enough synergy downtown that really recognizes downtown Janesville as being a vibrant community that people wanna live in. If you don't have people living in the downtown, it's very hard to do that. And we have a whole sector of young professionals who embrace living in the urban environment, unlike many of us who probably were socialized to, gotta live in suburbia. So that's, we need to be able to, you know, meet their needs, meet these people's needs and capture them long-term in the market, because if we don't do that, what ha, it's, it's not just about Janesville, it's also about our companies who can't retain the talent that they've hired, because, eh, Janes, eh, just doesn't have what I want, I'm gonna move on. We don't want that. We wanna capture them long-term.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Haven't heard anything from George and Senator Williams, either of you wanna chime in?
Sure.
Yeah, I just view this as a, as a tool in the toolbox. I think that, I like looking at it in a more broad view than just downtown. I think that this, if it's filling a need, I guess I don't really care where it is, whether it's downtown, on the east side, wherever, if we need it and it's gonna help us, I wanna see what we can do for it. I think the location of it is a little more on the irrelevant side as far as which part of the city goes, because it truly is, it's difficult for a lot of people to find rental units that fit their budget, and I do view, you know, even if we get some additional luxury apartments that take some people who have worked way on the waitlist or getting turned away from Woodsview and to be able to go there, and, and just, I do view that it would kind of free up additional housing. So I, I think that when one of these projects, or if one were to come forward, I definitely wanna take a look at the merits of that one, but adding one more tool to our toolbox to fix this problem is something that I would be in favor of.
Thank you. Senator Williams?
So from here, you're gonna come back with, if the council says this is something that we would like to look at, you're gonna come back with something that's more concrete?
Yes.
Okay. Because I can say, you know, without knowing a little bit more about it and, and see the really, all of the factors going into it, I'm a little bit on the fence still. I'm not opposed to it, but until we really see exactly what we're gonna be talking about, I, I can't be 100% for it, and, and I think in the community too, the community is just seeing it at, at this point, without knowing all the details, that it's just a handout to developers, and I think we need to sell it better, and I think we need to have, you know, more defined what exactly we're gonna be doing. A question, though, that was brought up to me is, as far as like the cotton mills, that was through a TIF also, wasn't it, way back when?
When it was first redeveloped, that is correct.
TIF 3.
And what's the difference between, pardon?
TIF 3.
Yeah. What was the difference, what's the difference between that and what you'd be doing now in?
Downtown?
It's, it's downtown. It would be permissible. We have TID 36, it covers the entirety of downtown, so.
But we had problems with, with the cotton mills, correct?
Well, there's been a change in management philosophy there, I think. I mean, it's, it's, you know, as, as time, every property needs reinvestment, right? And unfortunately, I believe, at least from my third-party observation, is that there hasn't been enough reinvestment to maintain, you know, the quality of housing within that building.
Okay.
And certainly.
But did we ever lose money on that?
We never, we did not lose money on that one.
'Cause I think that was put out there, that, that we lost on that, but.
I do not believe that's the case.
Okay. All right. Again, I, I would like to see, as far as I'm, I'd like to see this come back to us, but with more detail.
Just the one note to your concern about application with any TID district or any TID project, but for this assistance, the project doesn't happen.
Correct.
That's always, that's always gotta be discussed. So keep, please keep that in mind.
Will do.
I got, oh.
Councilmember Wolf, and then you?
Okay. I wanna deal with a call I had today, plus some of the speakers, plus Mr. Williams' comment about a handout. These, generally speaking, and maybe we can use Dollar General on topic as a TIF, and maybe we can use the boys' baseball site, because that's already been brought, put to the table. Dollar General was X number of acres of ag land paying anywhere from $18 to $25 a year in taxes, correct?
Correct.
Okay. It's now as a $61 million assessment, and from that $61 million of assessment, where they paid tens of thousands of dollars of taxes, if not more, versus $25 a year, and all the increment is paid back from those increased taxes. So I would argue, and please stop me, or correct me, I would argue that the incentives are not a handout, they're a delayed payback, and in entirety, each of our TID projects we've closed, we've received 100% payback of all incentives, plus sometimes even a surplus, depending on how long you leave it open. Is that not a correct statement?
We, we require a guarantee on the increment. If they do not create the value to pay the full guarantee, then they pay the difference between what that guarantee was and the actual. Dollar General, in fact, in the agreement, was only valued at $40 million. That was what they were comfortable with, and they are creating $21 million worth of value that, you know, more than what was anticipated.
Okay. So in frustration, it's, it's, and I know, I'm not sure whose job it is to educate the public, but there's a misperception of all these projects work. If we use the boys' baseball site as an example, and we provide a package, somebody who lives on South Main Street or Shannon Court, we don't pay for any of that package. The package is paid back through the borrowings that we put in as a public infrastructure, and then repaid in the increased increment of taxes that don't exist today. Is that a correct statement?
That is correct statement.
And we, as citizens outside of that district, we don't pay for that in our taxes. So if that's any misconception we can overcome, I think that takes us a long way, at least for people to understand that. Whether they approve of it or, you know, that's, that's subject to opinion of what the project is, but it, but it's not a, it's not a drain on our general fund as they exist. Now, having said that, there's risk, there's risk of failure, and I don't believe we've had one fail yet due to the excellent work of staff, correct?
Not recently. Many years ago, we had a couple of districts.
Okay, so, but entirely, they've been successful, and we've, we've recovered all of our investment and we've returned excess increment.
And then, once those TID districts close, we're creating increment that goes into the general fund that pays for everyone.
Plus the usage of what these projects are that didn't exist prior. We'll have employment, we'll have housing, we have things that exist in perpetuity, but for getting these done. So I think that's important, without editorializing, I think that's important for all of us to understand as we go down this. Now, the proofs, you know, what you bring forward, I, I support that we broaden our districts, work on definitions to make, to make it work, and then, then you, as staff, have to identify these things and put your stamp of approval on, on a case-by-case basis. We're not, and at the end of the day, you know, the viability will depend on, on the project, the developer, et cetera, et cetera. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Talk a little bit more about the look back that you mentioned earlier, to make sure that rents come in at what was planned. How, how long do you look back? How do you monitor that?
I, you know, again, and, and we've just got our first couple with look backs on the pay-as-you-go, but, you know, basically, it's, it's going back through their financials to make sure that, you know, where their rent levels are, are consistent with that project plan. So if they significantly increase those rent levels and they see significantly higher income on the project, then that's when we issue a letter saying, you're gonna need to pay us back, or we're gonna reduce what your payment is, because you made more money than what you anticipated.
Okay, so that is a little bit of leverage on our part, and how long does that go on to the?
Through the life of the agreement.
Okay. Okay. Well, I also am in favor of having you come back with more details around this, and as you probably guessed, I'd like to see some ideas about how we can help the lower-income folks in our community as well as developing high-end apartments. So hopefully, you'll come back with some more solid ideas about how we can work the other end of the spectrum, too.
Okay, so, I got a few more here now. So would there be any interest or to put in a sunset clause if we go forward on this, say, five to six years? Something that a further council could review, how this is working. If, if it works super good and we, we fill up, we may not need to do TIFs to support multifamily housing, if this thing goes gangbusters, which would be a pie in the sky, very optimistic look, but at the same time, something to review at a certain time, that possibly a sunset clause would be something worthy of investigation.
I, I think it'd be very difficult in the downtown area, because you still have those, you know, higher development costs with land assemblage, tearing down a building, something like that, you know, so you may not wanna do that in the downtown, because the downtown TID's 27 years and, you know, for a number of reasons. So certainly, it's something we can, we can discuss when we return. You know, I, my hope is, is that the market shakes out and those rents come up to meet the cost of development.
Okay.
Now, whether or not that happens downtown, there remains to be seen.
Okay. Then, Canada, go on Councilmember Conley's points here. You know, our strategic goal is housing for residents of all income levels, and one tool that we haven't talked about, I'm gonna have you define, or define it as you understand it, is inclusionary zoning as a strategy.
So inclusionary zoning is really kind of more focused on what your zoning patterns are, not necessarily the financial viability of projects. So there's been cases that have been gone, that have gone to the Supreme Court where communities have specifically chosen to not allow multifamily development. chosen to not allow multifamily development. We're not one of those cities. I mean, we believe that from a planning perspective, we need to provide all types of housing for all of our citizens. And in today's day and age, there's a lot of the market that wants multifamily, because they don't want to own a home, they don't want to mow a lawn, they don't want to have to be responsible for the maintenance. So it really doesn't focus on, on the financial viability. It's, it's more about, does your zoning patterns allow for all types of housing?
Okay. And then, kind of a follow-up on that, some communities will, will create subsidies to set aside a percentage of a project for not so much low income, but make it a bit more affordable. How would that fit into the city's strategy?
We've, we've honestly not discussed that as, as a tool or a strategy to move forward. You know, our neighbors in Madison do that. I guess that remains to be seen. It would be worthy of some additional discussion if the direction from the council is to pursue that.
I've done a little research on it, and I'll just kind of let the, everyone kind of mull over the pros and cons on it. Some of the pros is you've got increased access of affordable housing for people of different levels, and it also in more increased access to them to get the more quality, newer housing. And it helps increase the socioeconomic diversity of a community. And sometimes when it's in, in place, it's a, it's a way for the developer to get an approval a lot quicker and easier than trying to put through a very expensive project and people asking questions about it. I would say the negatives on, on it, though, is that it is not distributed very equally amongst the community. It's basically, you win the Willy Wonka, Wonky ticket to move into one of these units. So one, one family, one unit is, is that way, and everybody else is right back to where they started. It also has a tendency to have the developers push more luxury units to offset the cost of providing a lower-income one, and which relates to higher pricing to kind of balance that out. So that's just what I, a little bit of study that we've done here over the last weekend. Another question would be, instead of doing incentives, financial incentives to developers, could we look at some sort of a density bonus, increased densities?
We've, we've had that discussion briefly with a couple of developers, and the feeling is that because of the cost of construction is driving more of these, you know, increased costs, they do not believe the density increase would fully offset what their needs are right now.
Okay. But that's something that we could put in the toolbox, is?
It's certainly something I would discuss with the planners. Always, the density bonus is, is a trade-off potentially with, you know, the design of the site and, and, you know, how that eventually looks as an architectural, you know. If we're talking about a significant density increase, does that have an impact on additional parking needs or size of the building, scale of the building relative to other land uses around it? Certainly, that's an option right now under PUD. If somebody wanted to come in and say, you know, you're allowed 18 units an acre, I want to go to 22, they could do that through a PUD.
I mean, just a way to encourage more housing and lower cost, but it does come with a cost. And you just related what those costs are in non-cash terms. Because in Madison, it's usually the opposite. You ask for the sky, and they whittle you down to something where you can't hardly afford to make the project go, because they're worried about density in their, in their inner city. So I'm going to come back to where I started, and that is, the question in front of us was to direct staff to modify a city council policy of the commercial economic development to facilitate TIF assistance for infill multifamily projects outside of the downtown, but not in newly planted areas. And I'll come back to my first thing, and that is, in order for this, I think to get acceptance by everyone, we need to have a little bit more firm definition of what infill is, because it's going to create risk and uncertainty amongst developers. They're not going to do a lot of research upfront if they're not sure they're going to make it through. And risk and uncertainty adds to the cost, or means they're not going to try to enter our market. So I think that's something that we need to be very clear on it, even if it means further discussion. But I hate to see somebody go through a long thing and then get in front of a, a plant commissioner or a city council and have it denied, because it doesn't fit those commissions' definition of infill. And we had a, a situation like that, that wasn't exactly as it's been portrayed. It's more of the owner not making promises in the past and not defending those promises when a parcel became available. And, and that was embarrassing for all parties involved. And it did not help us get affordable housing and, or more housing in Janesville. So I think we need to remove some uncertainty and some risk on that. So I think infill is the key definition that I think we need to look into. That's why I started with that.
Can I expand on that real quickly? In addition to the infill projects that we may already have identified or can identify, the assumption is those are not already properties owned? Or is the assumption they are already properties owned for multifamily?
Not, not all of them are-
Okay.
-zoned today.
All right. So my point is, is that to make this work for both us and the developer, there, there possibly could be the need for rezoning for denser use than maybe the comprehensive plan even calls for. And we're back to a recent issue we had on the Far East side that we, and that's fine. I think we need to anticipate that as we go down this path and somebody brings an infill development, that we may be talking about zoning, public hearings, neighborhoods, maybe not happy about it, et cetera, et cetera. You know, I just think that needs to be on the table.
Yeah. Each of those stand on those, as a process-
I understand.
...stands on their own merits. And, you know, you know, some may need a comprehensive plan amendment. There's a whole process for that.
Yep, yep.
And Mr. Cherick has, has a proposal right now that's, you know, a comprehensive plan amendment. So-
Okay.
But, you know, we try to package those. We try to create some comfort level for the developer as to whether or not we can walk through the process.
Yeah. Just so, I just want to make sure it's clear. Just by the fact that we may, down the road, approve infill TIF projects, that doesn't automatically state that they are now ready for multifamily development-
That's correct.
-contrary to zoning and comprehensive plan. Okay. Thank you. I'm done. I promise.
Anyone else? Do you feel you have enough direction from the council?
I think we have plenty of direction. I'll be working with our consultant and city attorney. So, thank you very much.
And thank you for the representative, for Ellers, to be here. We didn't really need to call on him this evening, apparently, but appreciate him being in the audience.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to the next issue, which is discussion and directions on the city's comprehensive fee review results. And we've got Mr. Max Gagin to give us a presentation on that. Welcome, Max.
Thank you, Council President Mark Klein and City Council. Before you tonight are the results of our comprehensive fee review. So before I talk more about our fee review, I just want to talk about the city's general fund budget, as well as the general fund budget of many municipalities within Wisconsin. So what we often see is that we lack revenue diversity. In Janesville's case, 82% of our general fund revenue comes from two sources, property taxes and state aid. Regarding property taxes, we're restricted by levy limits, so we don't have much control as to how much we can increase that for operating expenses. And for state aid, we don't have very much control over that, because that's set by the state. So when we look at our general fund budget, about only 12% of it comes from user fees. And that's where the city council in the city has the opportunity to diversify its revenue. Next, I just want to touch base on what user fees are. So user fees are typically levied for programs and services that have a very direct, private benefit to an individual. Some may say it's a tax on consumption. And one of the reasons why we do a fee review is that when the program and service costs increase for a program or service that has a user fee, and that fee's not adjusted accordingly, you're essentially shifting cost to the general taxpayer and asking for your property taxes to pay a higher percentage of that cost for that program or service. So regarding the city's fee review, this is the third year we've done it. We started in 2016, and it's worked well. So over the past two months, staff has analyzed their program and service costs and the respective fees charged, and compared those to some of our peer and our regional communities. And based on the results of the fee review, we recommend the city council increase certain fees as part of the 2019 budget. So next, I'll just go through by department, the various areas. So the recommendations from our building division was, first, we would increase fees to cover 100% of the costs. Tom Clipper looked at his fee structure and his costs, determined that as of today, his fees are recovering his costs. So his only recommendation was to make a small adjustment to a plumbing fee that hadn't been updated in previous years. So we wouldn't see much additional revenue from that in 2019. We would estimate about $800. Thank you very much.
Did you do that?
No. There's a ghost.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn?
I didn't say that.
Oh.
Lost the slides?
There we are.
There you go.
Next, the clerk treasurer's office is recommending to increase miscellaneous license fees, some of them being for like amusement centers, amusement devices, but really bringing a nominal amount of revenue. Additionally, they would like to increase the dog and cat license late fee to $30. And this is more so to get increased compliance. And, you know, one thing that a fee can do is to incentivize a certain behavior. And in this case, we want to incentivize people to hopefully register their dogs and cats on time. And we saw the city council approved a fee last year that created an alcohol license renewal late fee, and it's been very successful in that we only had a handful of late renewals this past year, whereas in years past, it was 16 to 20. So we do see that, you know, when we do put in late fees, they are modifying people's behaviors, and we get increased compliance. And then the last fee, the clerk treasurer recommends, is the increase in our real estate search fee. So this is when typically a title company will request a search for like special assessments or other special charges on a property. And our estimated revenue from these fee changes would be about $21,000 in 2019. The Hebburn Public Library had no recommended fee increases for 2019. The fire department, the fire department, many of the fire protection fees are restricted by state statute. So if it's a fire protection fee, if we increase the fee, we have to decrease our property tax levies. So many of those weren't considered for fee increases this year, but the fire department is proposing the creation of an ALS non-transport fee of $175. So my understanding is if they receive a call, they go to the call and provide ALS level of care, which is advanced life support, but they don't transport that patient to the hospital, they would still bill them $175. And then next, looking at increasing our rural fire and EMS fees with our surrounding townships by 2%. And the additional revenue from these fee changes would be about $63,200. Within the parks division, recommendation to increase pavilion rental fees for those facilities with the highest usage. And most of those increases were about $5 for the pavilions, and then some minor adjustments to the Oak Hill Cemetery's fee structure. In total, both would bring less than $1,500. And then for the recreation division, make some changes to our camps. So an increase of $10 for the kids count camp per child, totlock camp by $5 a child, and then charge a camp registration late fee as well. Just talking to Shelley Slaypack, the recreation director, they're having issues right now with people registering very late for programs, maybe a day or two in advance of when it's starting. So they think that if they have a late fee in there, hopefully that can increase compliance and have people register earlier, and they can, you know, be able to hire the appropriate staff for that. And we estimate the additional revenue is about $7,600. And then lastly, for JTS, there's no recommended fee increases for 2019. So with that, the city recommends that the city council consider the fee increases that were as part of our comprehensive view review. In total, generate about $94,000 for the 2019 budget. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Max, didn't we increase the parks $5 for the pavilion use last year?
We may have increased it for some of the pavilions. So what the proposal is, is looking at usage, and I, I didn't compare this year to last year, but it's not always the same pavilion. So, you know, it's only, say, the city has 30 pavilions, it was maybe only two or three pavilions where we adjusted the fees by $5.
This year?
This year and last year.
And last year?
So, the likelihood that it's the same pavilion that's had a $5 increase both years is probably low.
Okay.
Councilmember Farrell?
Yeah, Max, I was wondering, did we review golf course fees? They haven't been raised for a while, have they? I know I won't be popular with golfers by asking that, but is that part of this?
Uh, no.
Of course, because they're, I know they're run by that professional, that group, but is that relevant to us or not?
We did not review the golf course fees here. What we looked at are all the fees that impact our general fund budget.
Okay.
So because the golf courses are operated as a special revenue fund-
A special revenue, okay.
Plus, the golf industry and market's very dynamic, and I think it's very challenging for even myself to analyze their fees, whereas, you know, Kemper's the subject matter expert, and they would-
All right.
-probably be best suited-
Okay.
-to adjust fees. And I knew, they do. They do frequently adjust their fees to match what the market, market dictates.
Thank you.
I got a couple. Man, you might need Chief Banker, Banker up here for those. What the ALS non-transport fee, brief us and the community a little bit on what an ALS call is, and then why some are transported and some are not.
Well, ALS is advanced life support, so cardiac events, diabetics, those type of things. So when we get a call for a patient, I'm sorry, Randy Banker, Fire Chief, forgot to introduce myself there. When we get a call for a patient, we respond to the house. And then what we have done in the past is, some people will go to the, I'll give you an example. Diabetic. It's very common, we'll go for a diabetic who's unconscious, we'll get to their home, we'll provide ALS care, maybe even an IV, and we'll give them some stuff to help them get back to normal. And then typically, what'll happen with a diabetic is, by the time we're all done, they're back to normal, which is what we want. And then we'll return and come back to the station. For years, all those supplies that we used, we had to pay for out of pocket. So all we're trying to do is, on these calls, is try to recover the cost of the equipment that we use on these calls. It's not every call that we go, that we get returned on. We had 20, a little over 2,700 last year of calls that we had no transport. And of that, roughly about 50% fall into this area. So it's not everyone.
Okay. Do you have somewhere you get there, and it's settled before you even get there?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Do, would you anticipate charging for that, or would this be-
No.
-sort of a discretionary fee?
No, this will be, what we'll do is, we'll manage it in-house, and it's only when we use medical supplies. So if you, you know, a good example is maybe, you know, your wife fell and sprained her ankle, you called the ambulance, you thought it was worse, we got there and realized it wasn't a serious event, you want to take her to the hospital on your own. If we don't do any ALS care or provide any ALS equipment, there's no fee.
Okay. So the secret is you got to give care.
It's just trying to recover the equipment that we use.
Okay.
That's it.
The second one is minor, but you're taking care of the surrounding townships by 2%. Are they expecting that?
Yeah, I met with all of them. I met- I met, it's been probably about a four-month process, but I've met with all the townships. They, some like it and some don't like it. But we've met, actually, I shouldn't say that, I have not met with Town of Rock yet. But yes, I have met with them and shared, shared with them last year that that was our intentions as well, that we were going to increase it.
So they're, they can budget accordingly?
That's why we, that's why I try to meet them, yeah.
That's the goal. Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate your help.
Any other question?
Anyone else? Seeing none, what is the wishes of council?
Is this action or is it?
It's like, no, there is no action. I guess we just.
No, just no action. So we'll take the, any feedback that the city council has today and then incorporate that into the 2019 budget proposal.
And then I just got one other one. On these camp fees for kids, how much of the cost are we, I know it's in here and I didn't find it, how many, how much of the percentage of the cost are we recovering on, on these programs?
Yeah. I know our budgeted target goal on youth programming is about 50%.
Okay.
But I can't speak to the specific.
So this, this increase of $10 for kids count and $5 for tot lot is trying to get us closer to the 50%? Is that the goal?
It would be to meet our cost recovery goal, yes.
Okay. I can't remember exactly how much that brought in. If that's something that we can live without, I think that was, would be good. I think the, the late fee is a great idea to put the late fee and increase that to get, so you can know how many people to hire. But my guess is that the kids count and the tot lot are kids that, $10 a kid, if you send three kids, that's 30 extra dollars out of your pocket for people that they might just forgo the program altogether.
And I can certainly provide that feedback to Shelley Slaypack and have her take a closer look at it.
That would be my only concern on that one.
Is that $10 for the summer or $10 a week or?
It's, it's a summer program. So I believe it covers 12 weeks.
Okay.
Councilmember Jordan?
So looking for guidance, my, I've talked to a lot of, a lot of residents on this and the opinion that I've gathered and where I'm at with this is, it seems like every year we're raising fees, we're raising taxes. I really feel that there's got to be a better way, that we can look at making some cuts, we can make it looking reductions and just really tighten our belts and not shoulder this on our residents like we seem to be doing every single year. There's people who are on fixed incomes, there's people who aren't getting raises to cover these tax increases and these fee increases. So my opinion that I've gathered from talking with residents that I represent is that there's got to be a better way to balance our budget than on the shoulders of our hard-working residents.
I understand. You know, these aren't decisions that are made lightly. It's difficult. But, you know, as part of our budget process, we are having our 2019 budget guidance meeting on August 6th. And as part of that, we always ask the city council for ideas to explore. So we're welcome and open to any program or service reductions that you or the rest of the council are willing to, want us to explore for the 2019 budget.
Absolutely. Councilmember Williams?
Yeah, I also guess have a problem a little bit with the fee increases for the recreation as far as the kids camp and, and that. But is there also some scholarships that are available to low-income families for those?
Yes.
So there are some, but I guess that would be one thing that I would have a problem with. I understand, nobody likes, I mean, we'd all like to live here and get all the benefits of everything that's going on and not have to pay anything. But certainly when we are providing a service that's not covered with your taxes, although there are some people and you like to think that when you pay your taxes, it covers everything and it doesn't. It doesn't cover going to the golf course, it doesn't cover going to, you know, other things. And these are things that the fees should, in most cases, be recovered at 100% rate. But there are some things that, you know, that we can cut back on somewhat. But I don't have a problem, especially like with the fire department, when they're going and providing a service and providing medical supplies, it should be reimbursed. So those I don't have a problem with. Thank you.
I would just want to say a little bit. Oh, go ahead.
You know, when we suggested the fee adjustments three years ago, the philosophy that at least I brought to the table was a very simple one. If we don't recoup the cost of doing business through our fee, then we underwrite it with general fund dollars. Is it correct?
Yeah. Essentially, you're asking the general taxpayers to pay for it.
Mm-hmm. And fees are only imposed on those people that actually use the certain service that is, is there. If I don't have a dog, I don't buy a dog license and I'm not affected by the fee.
Correct.
If I don't have a cat, you know. The education process is the important process, I think we need to follow irrespective of what we do in, 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 in this particular proposal. But to me, it has to be brought forward that if we don't recover our fees for those persons that use that specialized service, it is subsidized to cover our costs by the general fund. And for those people that want it both ways, it doesn't work that way. For a tax relief perspective, I think fees are appropriate because it doesn't, if you get 100%, it doesn't require that you subsidize it from the general fund. Fair statement?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrell?
Yes, the point I want to make and confirm this, Max, of this, for the fire department, there's 63,200. Is the vast majority of that from EMS fees with outlining townships? Or what percentage is for outlining townships?
Yeah. So the fire department estimated that about $50,000 of that would come from the creation of the new ALS non-transport fees.
Okay.
And then it would be the remaining, about $13,200 would be from the surrounding township.
Okay, well, it kind of lost my point a little bit, but certainly adding 2% when we have increased cost of our firefighters, EMS, equipment, et cetera, 2% to outlining townships, which is then borne by people other than taxpayers of the city, seems very reasonable to me. So we're talking 15 grand of the 90 isn't even borne by Janesville residents. I mean, it's borne by townships. So that's kind of the point I was trying to make. Thanks.
Councilmember Jordanson?
I, I think, I didn't quite articulate my point on that exactly. So these user fees, you know, we've raised them and then I think a lot of people's concern is it's, it's said in a way of, this is recovering costs, so it's not being burdened on the general taxpayer. But then we turn around and tax to the max anyways. So we're saying this is so that everyone doesn't have to pay for it, but then we raise taxes up to the max again. So what did we really do here other than have our, have our cake and eat it too? So if, if we're doing these fee increases, we, we should be able to say, well, we would, we didn't have to raise the general fund or we didn't have to raise general taxes up by this percent, we didn't have to go to the max because we were to put the fees on the people who use it. But that hasn't, that hasn't been what I've seen, that hasn't been what a lot of residents have seen. And that's where kind of, that's where they're feeling they're getting squeezed on both ends, that fees are going up, taxes are going up, but they're not getting the revenue, they're not getting the wages to increase to pay for that. So that's just kind of what I've heard and that's their side of the story that I really wanted to, to share with everybody is there are a lot of residents who feel that they're really just getting hit from both sides. Fees are going up, taxes are getting raised to the max, and it is concerning.
Well, I would have to say the city is getting hit from both sides too on this regard. Costs are going up more than we're allowed to increase our levy. And so we are always looking, you've been through a couple budgets, we are fighting about cats and dogs, literally, about how to, how to balance the budget. And so anything that we can do to keep our costs down, knowing that our costs are all going up, just because of the, we're what, how much percentage labor? 60?
In the general fund, 67%.
67 in the general.
So they're, they're all going to be having to get a raise, most of them because they're union members and they're, and we don't begrudge that, but they're all getting a negotiated wage that goes up 2% and our levy probably goes up, what? Each year?
I think we're estimating it's going to be for the operating budget about 1%.
So we get a 1% increase in our levy and a 2% thing for wages, which is 2/3 of our budget. So there, we're, we're getting squeezed at the city too. And I'm willing to take the heat, but this is a way to try to have those that use pay for it. Now, we used to do it, not as, not as good as we do now. We used to wait five or six years and then review them and then put a 20% increase on building permit fees, which was really nice for the guy that built the year before and really bad for the guy that built the next year. So I, from the building point, I encourage us to do a little bit every year, just more fair to the people buying and fair to the taxpayers. And on these other costs, you don't see anything from the library. They really are watching their budget as best they could. There's very little in here this year compared to what we had in years past. So yes, it seems like it, if you look at it, there's all these fees and everybody's crying about the other guy. But if you don't use it, it doesn't cost you anything and balancing a budget in a municipality in 2018 is very difficult, as you've learned. So that's all I had. You have enough direction, Max?
Yes.
All right. Next item is council announcements. Do we have any?
Yes, council members, one thing that I failed to mention in our upcoming events is that we've got a development project coming into the downtown, mixed use. And we've scheduled a joint session of the plan commission and the city council to hear the presentation at one time. So we've scheduled that on August 20th. It's a Monday night when the plan commission normally meets. And so Mr. Cherick is working the details of how we, you know, essentially dissect council and plan commission joint meeting with plan commission meeting. So we'll work through that, but just wanted, we'll get that out on a calendar invite tomorrow, but wanted you all to have that from a visibility standpoint.
And that's 6:00 PM?
Yeah, shooting for 6:00 PM start or so. And so that's a joint plan commission and city council meeting. Okay?
That be in the new council chambers?
Yes, it would be.
Presentation only?
Yes.
Okay.
Everybody good on that date?
We'll make it good.
All right. Real good. Thank you very much. Motion to adjourn?
So move second.
I heard Williams and Grober over the crowd, so. Need to vote on that or just?